I call the Wednesday, August 30th, 2023 meeting of the Grafton Public Library Board of Trustees to order. And welcome, everyone. And because of your Zoom access, Dr. Texiara, we will, any votes will be by roll call. Anytime there's at least one person zooming in, so.
Okay.
And so, starting, this is basically a continuation of last week's meeting and addresses just those agenda items that we didn't get to because it was like 9:30. So, item number one on the agenda, ongoing business 1A, funding request for $750 to CRF Interior Systems from state aid. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve $750 from CRF from state aid.
Or do I have a second?
I second that motion.
All right. Okay, motion made and seconded. Do we have any discussion on the motion?
I want to make sure that this is money well spent because it's going to be spent on an annual basis. How did, how did we get approached with this, this bill? Was this somebody just saying, oh, I know that you guys have this sort of a door and we'd like to be your service provider?
Yeah, I, I did not go and look up in my compendium of seven manuals to see if this is actually the manufacturer or installer of the door. So, it would be unusual, I think, for somebody to give a cold call to a library and say, well, I'd be happy to come and inspect your doors if you have that sort of door. So, my assumption off the bat was this is somebody knows what we have and is offering to take care of it.
So, item number eight on the list here for annual service, record service inspection report with manufacturer, right? So, it looks like they're going to work with the manufacturer. Record service inspection report. So, either they record the service and then do something with the manufacturer. I'm not quite sure what that means, but it looks like the manufacturer seems to provide any sort of, probably warranty, I would think. Do we happen to know if, if the door has a warranty?
I know everything has at least one year. I don't know if this door has additional warranty. I can go back and find that out if you want to pass over or table it. I don't know when I will get to it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not quite ready to approve this one. Just because it's, it's over the lifespan, I guess, what, 20, 20 years or more, 30 years? Who knows how long we're going to get out of this? If we don't have service, then we'll probably get less number of years, I guess. But, you know, it's a, it's a large expense and I feel like $750 is kind of high.
Let me ask you about, did, I know that sometimes vendors and architects and engineers, sometimes they'll, they'll come in and they're from, they come from afar and they, they build into their, their rates, whatever expenses to and fro. And so, I don't know, is this, is, do you know whether this is something local and whether the $750 can further be broken down? And, and if so, then we find out that, you know, a greater portion is either travel or can be done by, I mean, if, if it's not under warranty anymore. And, you know, I, I have an old Ford Toyota Highlander. Do I need to go to the dealership anymore? You know what I mean? Or, or can I get it on, on, you know? I, I use the term on the cheap very loosely. We want quality work, but does it always have to be this identified vendor? I, I agree with Aaron that without bringing in a separate agenda item or some future agenda item, I will make the comparison of this to the type of money, let's say, we will need for the cupola, you know, maintenance each year. And we look at those 750 or $1,000 expenses. They may not seem in any given time like budget breaking, but they do add up and could potentially compete with other, what I think is more crucial or necessary work. And so, I, I would agree with Aaron on this, but the question is, what are you looking for, Aaron, to get closer to a vote on this?
I think what you said is great. Trying to get a breakdown of the costs. You know, if it's, if they're just saying, saying 750, we'll, we'll get all these things. Well, that, that's fine, but it is nice to kind of see a breakdown. Also, I feel like the price is high. I don't know what my breaking point would be, but if we're going to give them the business, then we're giving them the business year after year after year. And if we're going to say, well, we're going to give you multi-year business off of this, we'd like a discounted rate or some sort of, you know, a better price. If that's the case, then, you know, I think, I think we have a bargaining chip and say, yeah, we'd like to give you the business. This wasn't something that was initially thought about when we, when we put the door in place. We think it's a good idea, but the cost is too high and I think they'll drop the price for us. But I'd be happy to, to talk to this person, Heather, GoTA.
I don't know if that's a role in responsibility of, I appreciate the offer, but I don't know that it's board of responsibility. I would say this falls under day-to-day operation and it is not the habit of us. We, we can solicit through quotes, but we generally do not negotiate with vendors. We try and just pick people who are on the combines contract, the MHEC contract or established vendors. For example, I would say Renad HVAC, who does our HVAC maintenance. Like they just give us like a list like this with a price tag of $11,500 and the town signs it.
And I'm wondering, in, in putting on a little cynical hat on, I'm wondering if historically that vendors, I mean, vendors, I appreciate their expertise and that they are not going to work for free. On the other hand, I think that there are times that people just look upon municipalities, as long as it's a funding source, ah, they'll pay it. And, and that I, I think that for various reasons, as we can expect budgets to get tight, that even if we haven't done it before, if there's no law against it or, you know, I don't see why we, we wouldn't find ourselves in a position to maybe start really questioning some of these numbers and possibly negotiating these prices or at least, at the very least, getting a breakdown. Is it by hour? Is it just like, I would like to see a breakdown.
One thing that would be helpful for me is we did have a one-week interim or more between this packet going out and that would have been a great opportunity to email me directly and say, here's what we need for the meeting.
Okay.
So that I can be prepared and not feel like I don't have answers for you and hadn't anticipated those questions.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I think we're in a unique position where everything, everything going on, everything coming around with one week. All right, I'll, I'll be, I'll keep that in mind.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question. So, this is for what's in the community room dividing the two spaces.
That door that I pinched my finger in, yes, that door.
Yeah, how, yeah, how, I mean, how often are we using that? Is it?
Not very often because it is heavy and challenging to move and it is not soundproof. So, it's not terribly effective in terms of you having two meetings going on at once. It's really not ideal. But, you know, it's us trying to get the best use of the limited footprint that we had to build the building.
Right. So, we typically keep it open?
We typically keep it open.
And that can create its own problem of not being used?
Um, no, I would just say that it's, it's heavy and challenging to, because it's not automated. So, you have to muscle it on a track, out at an angle, and then slide it all the way down and make sure that it goes all the way down and move six or seven panels.
Yeah, I would like to keep them on as a potential vendor. And if we need service, then we can, we can call them. Or if they don't want to provide us with, you know, on-call service, then, you know, then we can find another vendor who can support this thing.
Yeah, my question is why, so we're, we're thinking, I guess I was trying to figure out, do we really need to use this right now? I think it makes sense to know about it and I just didn't, I was just trying to get a handle on how frequently the, the doors are actually used. And, you know, it's, it's disappointing to hear that it's not really as effective as we thought it should be. And we know why, Beth, you suggested it and it was a good idea as far as the building project went, you know?
Roger, Stephanie has a question.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't, I was looking the other way. Yes, please.
That's okay, I, I didn't know if y'all could see it. So, if you're going back to the vendor, I just have one question slash comment. So, I think all of these things are great to have screened and fixed. If you're going to, or if we're going to enter into an ongoing contract, which it doesn't sound like at this point, that's going to be our decision. I would think that adding a line that if any of these items that we're paying them yearly to service stop functioning prior to the next year's service, that they're going to come back and fix. Otherwise, I don't see why this long-term is a good investment for us.
I also don't see, I mean, I know if you, I don't think you're saying that you're going to, I know it says, it says annual service. I don't think there's anything that says that we have to make an annual service. I mean, if they did it and you weren't satisfied, that's, you know, that, there's no reason why you couldn't. It's not like it's a contract. I don't see that.
It also looks like Madera Co. does service calls. They're based in Quebecs. But, yeah, I, I don't know if, if they have contractors such as this company that they would outsource the service call to. So, I think that's probably a resource for us. They have an 800 number, so they do service doors in the US even though they're based in Canada.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that if we do make the decision now or later to go through with this vendor and, and be paying them, that we probably want something in writing that they will either give us a discount or they will fix any of the line items that we are paying them to check yearly.
Yeah, right, so if something happens between service calls, you're saying that they would be responsible for it?
Yes, I think that that would be important for, you know, the library and, and the town financially.
I don't know if they would go with that.
Yeah, so even if.
Because what if something just breaks? They've done a good job, but it's wearing out, it just breaks, it's not their fault. I mean.
Well, I think that would be something that they would have to, if that was the case, then when they give us back the report, which I believe is number six, evaluate overall condition of the system, then at that point, that would be our responsibility to replace whatever that item is. But if they are not at that point, at the end of the year, when they're giving us back our recommendations for future repairs, number seven or number six, if they're not telling us what we need to replace and something breaks, I believe that that would, should be on them to replace. If it is told to us and we make the decision to kind of push that out, then that would fall on the board.
I don't think that's realistic, but let's see what happens.
Well, I, I guess if, if, there's, there's one of two ways we can address the, the, the motion, all right? And unless I'm mistaken, it, it sounds like this, you know, that people are not on board with, with proceeding in this direction, so we could do one of two things. We can either, if it's going to possibly vote in the negative, proceed with a vote that could possibly be voted down or have Aaron and Dana withdraw their respective motions and table this?
I would suggest we, we go with the, go through the vote because the commentary that I've heard is, it's not something we want to invest in at this time.
All right.
Stephanie has another question.
Oh, yes, please.
Sorry, I don't have another question. I forgot to lower my hand.
Okay, all right, then any further discussion, then I will entertain that motion. And any further discussion? All those in favor by roll call, Aaron?
Nay.
Dana?
Nay.
Stephanie?
No.
Roger, no, declare the motion defeated, zero in favor for opposed. And then we can just then add that to next month's agenda. Okay, funding request for $950.40 annually to HootSuite for social media management from state aid. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the funding request for $950.40 annually to HootSuite for social media out of state aid.
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
This one, I feel that the people who want to really speak about this one are not present. So, I, I think we should table this if possible. I know it's an important service and perhaps, you know, we can hear from, from Debbie, who does a lot with the social media or, or from Beth, who felt that this product is, you know, a good fit for the library. But it almost seems like it may not be a good investment, there may be a better product because it seems like that John.
Yeah, John, John had emailed me with some of the same issues that I, I had had or the questions, not so much issues, the questions. It was my understanding that HootSuite, just from a quick Google search, had a free product up until the last day of March. And therefore, they, this suite that you had as a freebie was now charging. So, did they notify us that they were charging now? And that's how this came about?
I think we haven't used it in several years, but, yeah.
Oh, we haven't been using HootSuite?
We used it at one point.
Oh.
And then I believe that they started charging, so we dropped it and it was longer ago than just last March.
Well, I, I had read that they, they had a free, maybe it was a, a more pared-down version, but that they were giving this away up until the last day of March, at which point they started charging. I thought that's how this came about.
I thought they often give it, that you get like an opportunity to use it and then, and then they want you to, to pay for it. A lot of, a lot of corporations and people that have, organizations that have to do social media use it because it is, what it makes it, it makes it so that you can do more, multiple social media posts on more than one channel. And they also, they, I guess, they also includes, they're going to help you with your analytics so you can see what's working and what isn't. So, that's a good, that's a good benefit of it.
And, and I, yeah, we weren't, we weren't questioning the, how good it was. I, I think that there was a question of like this Loomly buffer, other platforms. And, and I guess it's, at least it's John's understanding that HootSuite seemed to be the most expensive of other alternatives and only covered a single user license. And so, the question of how many user licenses would be available for that $1,000, again, not revisiting the prior discussion on, on the, the sliding doors. But again, this is $1,000 that, that has this been priced out? What are other towns use as any other introductory free offer from any other vendors that would also cover more than one license? And, and I guess.
Yeah, I think maybe more research could be done, but I think one of the things that we're grappling with is that the library staff doesn't have a lot of extra time. And this gives them, it makes them more efficient.
Well, but one person or more than one person? If there's only one user license?
I don't know if that's the case. I think maybe they need to do more research, but I don't know if that's the case. The other thing is too, I think one of the issues too, I may not be correct on this, is that the librarians often like for Instagram, they have to use their own personal devices and they're not really, they don't, they don't like that. And sometimes it, it does make it so that whatever the post is, 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 whatever the content of the post is not associated with whoever's making that, you know, doing the post.
Stephanie, you had a question?
Well, I did a little bit of research on this. John definitely has more of a background than me, so excuse me, I can't go into so much detail. What I looked at with HootSuite, much like you said earlier, was they were offering like a free trial until March and then they wanted anyone taking advantage of that free plan to move to that $99 a month plan. And it does allow you to kind of schedule and analyze, which buffer does not allow. But before we make the investment in paying this, I would love for us to, especially where it has been a few years since we've used this, to use a free one like buffer and see if we're really needing the analytics from the posts. And then revisit, is the analytics from the post worth us paying this eight, you know, 79, 21 a month or usually 99 a month? Or is it something that we can live without and have buffer instead, which does allow for up to three social media accounts and 10 scheduled posts per channel with their free plan?
Well, I think we should, I think, I think that, I think it would be good for us to find, find a social media, something that would really help with the social media planning. And I, it's nice to have stuff, things that are free, but I think we really need to help the staff and get, and figure out what would work for them. That's my opinion.
So, Beth or Debbie, whoever would be using, it would be you Debbie, that would be using it. Would there be any other person using this? And in your absence, would anyone else be trained? Like, like who, because I understand that to get more than one license, that there's, I guess, $250 extra to get three users and 739 a month for five or more uses at an additional cost. And then I guess there was this two-factor authentication. But that would only be if you're using your personal device, I guess. So, so who else uses this? No one?
Or this may be an unpopular opinion that, oh, I'm muted on Zoom, but I guess it doesn't matter. I've been doing the majority of the social media posting and I do it from my personal device and I don't have an issue with it. That's a personal preference on the part of some people on staff. I've literally never logged into any of our social media accounts on the staff computers. I've heard discussions about why do we have a TikTok account for the library? It's on my personal device. It's not anybody else's. I have not, Beth's too.
And I have Instagram and Twitter and, yeah. I'm on the same page with you.
I've never, you, I did not, I looked at HootSuite years ago when I was doing social media for another organization. And at the time, this is the thing about technology, at the time, the posts with HootSuite were not tracking the way they are, they were with organic posts. Like if I were to get on my, my device with my thing and write a post and post it live, it's boosted in the algorithm more than if you're paying a company like HootSuite to put it out. And that's just how Facebook goes back and forth, Instagram goes back and forth as to what's boosted in the algorithms. And it, it goes back and forth and they constantly do that to keep people on their toes.
So, if you, when you say your device, is it your phone? So, if you lost your phone, library's accounts would be lost or no? How would that work?
No, we have a login. Other people could log in to do it. The concern was brought up, I think primarily by one specific staff member who wanted more, to be able to, to sit down and do a bunch of social media posts at the same time. And that is, that is an advantage of doing that. When we talked about paying for a service that has analytics, to be very honest, I don't know anyone that has any time to analyze our social media posts.
Sure you don't.
I have put time and effort into posts that I thought were hilarious and funny and they got no traction whatsoever. And then we did like a quick little something or other and it just blew up. Like there's no rhyme or reason really that we can get to. And I don't know that a company like this is analyzing that either.
Is there any, any, I don't know if we have any library policy or whether it's any town policies about use of personal devices? Do we get into sort of muddied waters about your continued use of your personal device for any of this or not?
We, I think it's just a matter of, several staff members don't want to use their personal devices for work. I've been doing it since I started. And it's, it's, I, I've had to do that at other jobs too. And it goes back to the discussion with the authenticator app for logging into Outlook. It's not a big deal to me. I don't, I, I feel like if we're going to, if we're going to be concerned about who's monitoring us logging in and doing things and, and that kind of thing, you're going to be monitoring that everywhere you go in this day and age. It's just a personal preference that some people will not do anything work-related on their phone. And I feel like as Beth's assistant and things that come to her and then come to me and if I don't use my phone for work things, then we wouldn't know that the library flooded. Beth would know the library flooded with it, you know?
Moving forward with the analysis of what is maybe the best way to approach this. And Aaron mentioned at the top of the discussion about, you know, John had had more familiarity. Stephanie, you had done some research. What is the next step we take? Do we, do we have you Debbie, look at options and, and see what the user licenses are? If we want more than one person to at least have access to this and to, and to post? And whether we need all the analytics? And whether we, do we try out a suite and see that we like it before buying into it? Like what, what would be our next steps?
Um, I have a thing if some, if you were. Oh, sorry?
Did you have a question?
No, 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 I had, I had one little answer to what you just said. As far as HootSuite, if we were to move forward with wanting to purchase this, if we chose instead of to do an annual, which I know is cheaper monthly. If we did a monthly, they have a 30-day trial the first time for the account. And it would allow you a 30-day period to see and reevaluate you're using it before you start to get charged. And they do send you an email reminder before the end of your trial. So, there is an opportunity for us to say, maybe we would consider it for a one month as long as we're meeting as a group prior to that cancellation and have a few weeks of Debbie being able and Beth being able to come back to us and let us know in real time how they used it, how it was beneficial without us having to make that financial decision. But if we have another meeting prior to the, that subscription ending, we would have to, I think, vote on whether we would want that automatically canceled or if we would be willing to pay the next month.
So, do we have to, on these situations, do we have to commit to an annual fee? And then we can back out after 30 days?
Yeah, that's how it works. So, we would essentially say, yes, I want this. They give you 30 days to make sure it's exactly what you want and you have to cancel it within that time if it's not living up to your expectations. But they want to make sure that it's, you're getting the product that you want so that you don't essentially kind of go back and give them bad publicity for what their product is.
So, I'm looking at this annual billing. It says billed annually at US $950.40. Discount applies for first year. So, because it's billed, we don't have to put down a credit card or, or pay anything. We do?
Yes, it's right.
You do, that holds.
It says billed annually.
Credit card only though, into your billing detail.
It's not scroll, scroll down there, that's all.
Or PayPal.
Did we, have we, did we have, did we use it once?
Yes, so we had HootSuite five or six years ago. A staff member wanted it, paid for it and got reimbursed. And at that time, the way it was structured was that there was one login to HootSuite, but there was still like a team, so when I went, it didn't show on Facebook or Instagram or Twitter or whatever who had posted, it was just Grafton Library. But in the backend of HootSuite, I could see, oh, Sarah posted that, Allison posted that. I have to be honest, I didn't use it. I always just logged in directly to Facebook or Twitter or whatever to post to social media because I didn't do it very frequently. When either the, I think either the price went up or at some point, we decided we weren't going to be using it anymore. I think the pandemic happened and then people decided that they, they wanted to bring it back. Staff are specifically asking for this because they're familiar with it. They don't have the time and bandwidth to learn something new. Like I, I feel like I say this in every meeting, we're understaffed, we're at just the end of our rope and highly stressed. They made the specific request for something they're familiar with. There is an option for a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, like the Friends or Capital Campaign, to sign up on our behalf and share a login and password for $0 if we wanted to go that route. But we don't qualify as a town department for a nonprofit to get the free product.
And they allow that shared login or would we, is that prohibited?
I don't know. I don't know. I haven't read the fine print.
Licensing agreement. I'm just cautious about committing money on a, on the library's credit card that we, even if we vote to back out on that they wouldn't.
I don't love free 30-day trials and remember the date and watch for the reminder email. And then somebody has to be responsible and if you miss it, you get billed. Like I am just in general, not a fan of that.
So, how are you, Debbie, how are you, I guess, how would you be put out if we tabled this or voted this down tonight?
Well, you would.
I'm not really a fan of it.
A fan of what, HootSuite or going?
Of having a, I think that the thing that I didn't get to a second ago. Of having a, I, I think that the thing that I didn't get to a second ago, um, was. That as a staff, we need to be on the same page as to what our social media is going to be and what it's gonna look like. If we have a bunch of different people posting a bunch of different things in a bunch of different ways, it doesn't track well. Um, I know that much from the algorithms and things. So if we give, if we get one user agreement in a team and. You know, we've had complaints about, um, events that have fallen through the cracks and not gotten advertised, well then. There's gonna be a training, there would have to be a training process for somebody to get like, we're not just gonna give it to everybody in the library. So it's, it's one of those things where it is in my job description, it's not in other people's job descriptions. If we're just turning it over to everyone. I would like to, you know, to get past floodgate. The summer, my children got on a bus yesterday and went to school, so I have regular hours again.
So how is this even on the agenda? Was it staff? How?
S- so, there used, staff used to post to social media. Um, and Towne and Grafton has a social media policy that requires accountability, that they need to know who made that post. And with Facebook in particular, it requires you to associate your personal Facebook account with the library's like, commercial, for lack of a better word, page. And they didn't like that or want that. So they stopped posting and sharing and marketing materials because they wanted to be more private pers- in their personal lives. Associated with the library. And then the whole thing with Instagram and TikTok became popular, but the only way to post to those. Without a third party vendor like Hootsuite is to use a personal device and then people decided they didn't wanna. There is no library device. I don't have a library cellphone. I can't post to Instagram or TikTok from a computer. You can only do it with a phone. They are mobile.
Okay, I did not know that.
And then it also goes into, like, there is a, there is a technology policy, but I think it's more in favor of anything that the staff member creates on a work device. Is owned by Towne and Grafton. And, and not so much about you can or can't use a personal device at work for work purposes, but there is a concern, I think, about. Public record and retainage. And if you're texting me on my cellphone. And we talk about library business and somebody wants the public record request, then even though it wasn't on a work device, my whole phone can be subpoenaed. And then I have no device and now people are in all of my private business. So people are trying to be boundary around personal devices, but it's very hard. In a situation like this where we've got a public.
A library having a, its own cellphone, the library that is not someone's personal device, is that, is that an option? If these things are posted.
So we have iPads, but then we need that, like a, a plan, I think, to post, you know?
It, it still needs to be.
Or you have to be on wifi.
There's no problem with tabling this and looking into some other options, um, but it is more than just saying whether or not we want to use this one particular. There are other services out there. Even when we get another service, we're still need to gonna be on the same page with communication and, and a, a plan. Um, so this is not, this is not necessarily going to solve that.
Left and right, but, and I see Stephanie's hand is still up and I didn't know if you had a question.
No, I just wanted to say that you can post from Instagram from a PC. There are limitations, um. As far as sharing, um, but it sounds like we have too many questions and. I, I really think that we either need to decide to vote on this or to table it. Because there's more questions than we have answers at this point.
Right. No, I agree with you on that, um.
Could I just make a comment on that? From what I'm hearing, um, and I might not be understanding this. But it sounds to me like Debbie is the one that's doing, she's in charge of the social media. Is she doing all of it? So.
Staff are not willing to post to social media under the current conditions. Because there's no money budgeted for it and it was something staff asked for, so to advocate for their wants and needs, I brought it forward to you.
What I don't understand is, is, um, I guess what I wanna know is that. Is that, in the future, do you want, is it just gonna be Debbie that does the posting or do you want more than one person? Cause that's what I'm not understanding. And, and I use, I mean, I use my personal device and it. It, it doesn't bother me, but it, it just comes up, it doesn't say my name on it if I do Instagram and, and other ones, but.
Members are posting.
They are?
So I, from PCs, I, I don't know.
Okay, I just.
I, there's, there's more that needs to be, I think more that probably needs to be broken down and.
Then I would, um, if we're in agreement with tabling it, then I'll ask Aaron to withdraw his motion and Dana her second.
I withdraw my motion, uh, to approve the nine hundred and forty some odd dollars for Hootsuite.
I withdraw my second, my second motion.
All right, and we'll table this and we'll, we'll just put on next, the next agenda and then. You all continue posting things to social media and then what do we, what's the next steps? What do you, uh, you'll do more recent?
We can look into.
All right, and we could, um, address this in September, continue the discussion. Uh, policy update, general update, uh, two A. Aaron, you had a general update before we, uh, go to the approval of the two drafts.
Yeah, so, um, the policy committee, uh, couldn't schedule time in August due to vacations and travel. Um, so, uh, we did not meet in August, um, but we decided that, um. Uh, these policies were ready for board approval, um, so we agreed to, um, put these on the agenda for your review. Um, and, and, uh, feel free to ask questions and, and, and I'll do my best to answer questions. We have three members of the policy committee, so I'm sure we can answer every question.
And, and to your point at our meeting, um, I think it was last week, is that, um, you know, being new to the board. Guess there's an opportunity to, to check in as these things are being developed, so, um. You know, I am not one to, you know, beat this thing up. That doesn't have to be. You know, every, uh, T crossed and, and I dotted. For us to move forward with this, in my opinion, we could always tweak things as, as, you know, we go along. I did have some questions, but I, I will, um, accept a motion on the, uh, to approve the art exhibit and display policy.
I can make a motion to, uh, approve the art exhibit and display policy.
Do we have a second?
I think, is that from Stephanie? Just you have a question?
Stephanie still has her hand up.
No, I was just, uh, Debbie just fixed it, but I wanted y'all to know that it was actually between pages. What you were talking about.
Waited to scroll up until you finished your.
There's a motion on the floor by Aaron. Do I have a second?
I second the motion to prove.
Motion made by Aaron, seconded by Dana to approve the art exhibit and display policy. Uh, do I have any discussion?
Yeah, so Roger, just, just real quick. So, when we're approving policies for the board, especially new policies. You know, we're putting our best foot forward with some of this, um, but nothing is set in stone. They're always meant, meant to. To, to try, um, try it out, uh, in, in illicit feedback. From the staff and the public. And if things just aren't working right, then it goes back to policy committee for another review. And depending on the priority, we can always, um, bring it sooner than later. Um, so that's kind of the intention with a lot of these, like you said, to your point, you know, we could, um, nitpick these to death. These are very long policies and this is a brand new policy we've never done before.
So, um, so I, I, I'll wait for other discussion. As chair, I'll, I'll, I'll be the last to weigh in. Any discussion on, on the motion and, and the wording of this, uh, policy?
I just thought was really thorough. I've read it several times and gone over it. It seems to me, be very thorough.
And I, I'll, I'll add that I really do appreciate, a lot of the times, you know, people look at committee work and, and a lot of times subcommittee work. Is just as tedious and involved, so I appreciate everyone's really, uh, digging into this in due diligence because, uh. It seems very comprehensive and, um, if we run into situations that need to be addressed, that aren't necessarily, necessarily addressed, they need to be tweaked. Yeah, we can, we can always do them on the quick, um.
Yeah, and what was really kind of fantastic about these two policies is that we, we got a lot of, um. Feedback from the, um, from the union. And, and also from the department heads in the sense that, you know, if we're saying that. Uh, a lot of the rooms are available, um, for public viewing, well, um. What happens if, uh, adults wanna walk through the children's room with unintended, you know, like it kind of violates other policies, so. So we really put a lot of thought into how this is gonna kind of affect, um, other policies. Um, and also, uh, the effect on the staff having to open up rooms just so that an adult can go in and, and take a look at. You know, children's, children's artwork, so.
So, um, when, um. Did you have any comments on, on the content at all?
No, but, um, so I guess what you just said, I don't really, was there, I, I think I missed if there was anything about that. So if, if I'm an adult and I wanna see the children's display and it's in the children's room, is that permitted? Maybe I overlooked that.
I, I believe, um, I'm not sure where it calls that out.
I must have overlooked it, okay.
Which, can you?
Well, it, it doesn't say anything now. It doesn't say anything about that.
Yeah, those were the deliberations that, that we had, um, and feedback from, from staff. But these, it, it doesn't prohibit artwork from being displayed in, in these locations. More so that, um. If this policy somehow supersedes the unattended child policy or unattended adult policy. Then, you know, those policies will, you know, kind of supersede someone's ability to go in and, and hang out in the team, team room when they're not allowed to be in there. Do you know what I mean by that? So it doesn't specifically call it out here, but those are the deliberations that we had and feedback.
So I, I have a question, um, on the areas where you put deleted in the, in the comments on the sidebar. Were there previously comments in those? In other words, there's, it's a sort of a live document and it says deleted. So I don't know what those references are throughout the document. There are a, a couple on page three. And a couple on page four. So. I didn't know what we were, in other words, there's no, this is all accurate, in other words, the term deleted may have re- referenced a prior version. Maybe?
I'm guessing that we didn't go through track changes and save again as a, to bring a finalized draft.
All right, so this, so I should ignore the track cha- changes, reference to deleted, okay.
So that people could compare it without having to look at two documents.
Let me ask, and, and this, this, this came up before about Roman numerals and accessibility where. Um, the only Roman numerals are the main numbers and everything else is A, B and C versus other. You know, sub ones, twos and threes, um, and that I had mentioned about the screen readers. That the Roman numerals are not always picked up, actually not picked up. As ones, twos and threes, they're looked upon as I, the letter, like the letter I. Um, so are we married to the idea of Roman numerals or are we flexible to?
I think, if I can speak, I, I think this was drafted before your recommendation on that when, when you came on as chair, as new trustee. Um, and it's been a little while since we looked at it and I didn't remember, but I think it's easy to accept it with a recommended change to structure it with. Letters and numbers to make it accessible.
Yeah, the, the, I guess, al- also as an aside, the running joke is like, like who, who knows even? That'd be a good trivia question, like what is this, you know, Super Bowl what? Or, or, uh, having someone look at a clock, a kid look at a clock and then, and try to guess what time it is. Um, so is everyone on board with swapping out the Roman numerals?
So, I, yes, um, but with just, uh, one, one comment. We'll have to decide that, uh, all policies going forward will remove Roman numerals and I think that's a very, um, important thing for. Um, the library to have and to make the policies accessible. Do we know how, um, the town policies in, in bylaws are written? Because I don't really want to, I, I feel like this is the way the town does it and this is why we've adopted this.
So, uh, my recollection is we adopted it because, um, another trustee wanted us to structure it in a way that it was easy to call out to specific items. And recommended this format. And they were a lawyer. So they said, you, you should just use a standard, you know, indexing system of Roman numeral. Letter bullet point numbers, so that you can say, in section one, item C. It says that suitable space and time limitations will be set, so. We're gonna, you know, offer you this date and time because of what it says in section one, item C. So this, the, the, I say the formatting doesn't matter as long as we make it consistent going forward. I, no, we don't wanna go back and edit every single block.
And, um, yeah, in other words.
Sarah, if I may?
Yeah, please, please.
Um, just where you asked about the town bylaws, I pulled it up and the town bylaws are, are numbered the same way. As this plan is, just instead of using Roman numerals, they use. Like the one, two, three that we write with. Um, but it is like, it says section one, section two, and then going down from there, it switches to the letters.
All right, no, thank you for that input. And I would say that even if the town bylaws had been Roman numerals. I'm sure accessibility advisory would have weighed in regarding, um. Making those changes. I, I don't, I, I think it's, for lack of a better term, I'm, uh, archaic and, and, and outdated. Um, but no, but I think though that there are certain situations regarding legal documents, um. And such that require Roman numerals, but I don't think they do here. So, thank you for that input, Stephanie. I had a question, um, on two C. Um, the word discourage, a library discourages and it talks about, um. You know, inappropriate images, violence, sexual, sexually explicit stuff. Um, so it doesn't prohibit it, it just simply discourages it, so. Is that, do we sometimes just put those words in there just to kind of say, well, we're not banning it. But we discourage it and we still leave that word discourage in a policy? I don't know. Three D then, I'll, I'll just move forward, uh, on three D. Exhibitors will be limited to one exhibit per year. Is that calendar year, rolling year? Um, and when does that start? Because eventually it will be. There will be an adoption date of the policy and then from there, um. Is it, do we keep track of when the last time someone exhibited? Or is it, we just know how many times they exhibited? Is it rolling year or calendar year? Does it really matter?
I, I, I think it's, um. Calendar year, right? It doesn't need to be spelled out, but let's say we adopt it, uh, tonight. Really, it's, it's one exhibitor per, per, per month. And if they wanna exhibit in. So in November this year and January of next year, that's fine, then they won't be able to exhibit. And, you know, for Nov- November next year, right? Cause they exhibited November this year, January next year, so. We'll give them a free pass if they wanna exhibit that quickly.
So is it assumed that it's calendar year or is it understood? Or is it, it, would someone call into question whether it's ambiguous? In the absence of putting calendar year, that's all. Because someone could, you know, they're an artist, they like their work, they want to show their work. And then they kind of nudge the policy and say, well, you know, it really didn't say calendar year, you know, so. Um, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, I don't know how you'd interpret it any, any other way though.
So from a policy standpoint, just cause that's my background. Um, the way that it's written, it would be interpreted very easily as one year from when they displayed. So if they displayed in November, then it would be November of the next year.
So it's roll, like rolling year?
Yes, yes.
I, I, it's just worth discussion, but, I mean, this is all flexible and, you know, um. You know, I'm not gonna beat this up with, I'm trying to amend the motion with, by inserting things. On, on three P, a staff member must be available during the setup and breakdown of the exhibit. So. Is that because we don't want things damaged or? And the recent, and, and so without bringing a whole nother policy into this, but bring another policy into it. Like we have app, we allow after hours events in the community room where they're unsupervised. And so they're allowed to. Work with all the implements of that room unsupervised, but on this, we're requiring, uh, a staff be available during the setup. And breakdown of the exhibit. Is that because there's?
It's about ladders, ladders. So, staff actually, library staff are not supposed to climb ladders. So we mean, by staff member, it can be any town of Grafton employees, specifically a custodian would need to be available to go up and down the ladder and hang the art, because neither the staff member or the artist can climb on a ladder.
So, so this is.
This was a recommended wording.
So it's anticipated that it would be of suf- some items would be of sufficient height to require.
Require a ladder.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my recollection.
Alright.
Yeah, that we were, um, yeah, staff are not the ones, you know, library staff is not, are not the ones installing it. Um, Stephanie has her hand up.
Alright, yeah, please, yeah, Stephanie, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay, the other, um, reason that, when I read it and I, I think it was really thought out, um, so props to the policy committee, but under facility.
Hello, I, I just lost your audio.
Hello?
No, I.
Try, try again.
Try again from the beginning.
Okay, sorry. So, uh, under facility number A, it says it's a locking display case. So unlike if someone was to rent the community room, we're not unlocking the top of the library or the other, um, like the children's room or tween space. So I, that's why I read it, that, that a staff member had to be there because they would need to unlock the display case.
So the exhibit, but the exhibit isn't necessarily limited to the display case, but the rationale, though, was that the displays that may be on walls or elsewhere? Um, well, then that being fixed to the wall.
Walls.
No.
No, but they're, they're very high up, the rails are very high.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
That's a legitimate question, though, because the display case has glass shelves and you would have to get down some sort of thing to go up to the stepping device, whether it be just a stepsister or a ladder to.
So, this, so the staff member, the, so is the staff member there, to make sure that if someone gets hurt, that it's reported, that just in case someone, like, what is the purpose of the staff member?
To climb the ladder, to climb the ladder.
But it's not a library staff, it's custodial.
Custodial, but, but I don't have custodial, so I can't say it's a custodian.
Okay.
I was assured that should we be in this position to have artwork installed and need someone to climb on a ladder, that the town will provide the staff to do.
Okay.
So that's the clause that allows for.
And, um, so a staff member, that necessarily precludes volunteers from doing that?
Volunteers cannot climb ladders.
Okay. Alright, I won't climb any ladders, alright, um.
I think you're gonna need more help.
Alright, I, I can't get beyond the third step, I, I don't do heights.
I like ladders, but I got in trouble for climbing one, so I don't do it anymore.
So, um, and then lastly, on eight D, um, the middle exhibitor is looking to exhibit during the fall and winter months, September to February, should submit an application or later than July first. So I guess there'll be discretion that once this is approved, that, um, for anything um, in the winter months, well, we're already beyond July first, that we could just ha- set some deadline or whatever, or announce that for the initial displays, that there'd be some future date, whatever you choose, by which they'd be bound to.
Yeah.
So.
Uh, if this policy were to be approved tonight or next month, um, would we be expected to immediately implement it? Or would we be allowed to say, great, starting Jan- very first, we'll start taking applications? Because again, we are overwhelmed, absolutely overwhelmed.
So, so then.
By so many new things.
So, I guess that would require, uh, amendment to the main motion, either by someone declaring it and then, or making that amendment to the main motion and seconding it, or we would agree by consensus that the, to, to, um, that we would consider this, if approved tonight, that this policy shall take effect on January one? But do we wanna be without such a policy before then? And what would be the reason to, to not move forward with implementing it immediately?
So, we do have an upcoming event that is an art show, that we intended to do a program with Small Stones Festival of the Arts. My understanding was they were bringing all of their own display pieces, and they would not need to take advantage of either the glass display case or any hanging art rail. So there's, we do have an art exhibit coming that is like outside of this policy, that is a partnership and program. So I don't feel the need to rush this through because of the Small Stones Festival of the Arts. And again, I will reiterate that as soon as it's live, then we have artists who've reached out and asked to exhibit, who we maybe have to contact.
So when does the Small Stones Festival start and?
I, I have a couple of comments on that, that some of it.
I'll just ask.
So I think art intake begins on the sixteenth of October and continues for a few days while they set up, and then the exhibit opens the next, Dana can correct me, the next weekend, and runs for like, oh, ten, eight, ten days, and then there's pickup. It's about a two-week span, October.
Yeah, I, it opens October tw- uh, uh, October twentieth, I'm on the sta- I'm one of the organizing motors. But, um, I guess I have two comments on this. Um, one is, I think, um, I think it's great, I think we need this, but I really don't see, I think, I think, I don't see how we're gonna get the sta- um, custodian staff to be able to come down and do all this. Uh, but maybe it's, maybe it's only gonna be once a month, so maybe it's not a big deal. I mean, Beth could probably would de- determine that, but the, I think the Small Stones did wanna use the, um, staff, this, it's.
Right, but that wasn't the original agreement, and then they asked if we had enough, and I said, no, and we need to ask to get more, and then I delegated that, so.
Okay, so then someone will.
Yeah.
I guess that's under, I guess Beth will handle that, but someone will have to oversee that.
So if we, if we can't, if we don't have an assurance that we can obtain custodial staff in advance, all of this is moot because it would require some, if, if, to, to the extent that anything required a ladder.
I think we're.
Something in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're looking for the same thing.
Prepared for that somewhere in there.
Well, again, there's the assurance that, again, I brought this to Town of Grafton and said we would need custodial support, and it just might mean that it's not gonna happen necessarily at the artist's convenience, that, that it needs to be coordinated between library and custodial and, and the artist or exhibitor. And I think that that's somewhere at the beginning, about like, well, you know, we will do our best, but you need to be accommodating of that we're trying to manage multiple schedules. It might be under. Um, F, under three F, all displays and exhibits must be set up and removed with as little interference as possible to the daily operations of the library. So that means we can't drop everything or get custodial in just because an artist wants to hang it on X date and time, that we've gotta coordinate that.
So knowing that's the, but knowing that, switching gears back to the, the timing, once the Small Stones Festival is over, what, what would be the reason to delay it further? Let's say we said, alright, so it's in October and it goes till, what, early November?
Goes to the end of the month.
End of what?
October twentieth to October twenty ninth.
Alright, so why wouldn't, alright, and so when is the, so will all of this be taken down by the end of the month?
Yeah, they do it, it's done very quickly.
So why wouldn't we wanna implement this policy on November one?
Again, I just, we are so overwhelmed, I can't.
Alright, but I, I know, I.
It'll be taken down like the last week of the month.
But I guess, I, I don't, I mean, to the.
Be possible to accept applications starting after the Small Stones Festival, since you have a contingent of art, art-minded people coming to this event and saying that you could start taking applications, but that displays might not be, displays will not be installed until January first. Because we, we would have time, have to have time to look over.
It says, applications may take up to three weeks to be reviewed. Um, I don't necessarily think that it needs to be spelled out what the maximum time it is for them to be, you know, that, that, let me, let me back up. It doesn't necessarily need to be spelled out for someone who's looking to display art to say, well, wait a minute. You know, this policy says it has to be displayed within sixty days or ninety days, whatever, it simply says that applications may take up to three weeks to be reviewed, I guess it would be in your discretion to time that. So.
We put that in as sort of a, what seemed like a decent amount of time at the time, um, before we had more staff go out on leave, and this was literally months ago that we drafted this.
Yeah.
And before the flood and before things, so.
Right, and, and, and not to sound, uh, unappreciative, but I will say that I, I, I think that, I mean, at any time that things get really, oh my god, it's so busy, you don't just say, well, we're no longer going to display art because we're busy, so.
We'll get to it.
Yeah, and so I, I don't.
Yeah.
I'd, I, I, I feel strongly that once the Small Stones Festival is over and you are assured that as of a certain date, everything is down, even if you, even if this is implemented starting on November one, the artwork won't go up.
Yeah, so, i- if, if I may kinda echo what Roger is saying, I don't think there's any reason to delay, uh, putting this policy into effect. Um, you're gonna get applications, and it's up to your discretion on, you're gonna want applications, like, okay, we're ready to put up some art, who, who's got the first application, and you take a look at it and you review it, and you, you work with them. I mean, there's no precedent to like, have to service all the applications immediately as they come in. Uh, I, I think this is a really nice policy, we wanna get those in.
Okay.
You know, and if it doesn't really, if it's overwhelming, then we'd like to hear, hear it, and then we can review and, um, you know, agree to make adjustments to, to the policy, but again, I think you're gonna get applications and then you say, okay, we're ready to put up some art, let's take a look, and there's no precedent to forcefully say, you gotta do this, gotta do this, put them up, put them up, put them up.
So, so Aaron, are you, um, are you in agreement or in disagreement of, of saying that if we agreed by consensus to, if, if we approved it, that it shall be in effect as of eleven one? Or, or do we just, if we approve it, approve it tonight immediately? And then basically say, because of the Small Stones Festival, we're really, n- I mean, we can, I guess, are you saying that you, you're too busy to take applications before November one, or you're just unable to, because of the conflict with the Small Stones Festival, have any competing artwork?
Yeah, well, I know that the first thing we have to do is make a request for art display and exhibit form online, which hasn't been completed, which is listed here under B, so.
Would, would every, I mean, by consensus, would everyone be in agreement with, with, um, that, assuming this passes, that it would be, um, adopted effective eleven one or not? What are people's comments on that?
Well, so, I, who's gonna be responsible for this, does somebody have this in their job?
Is it gonna be you? It's us, it says admin team, it says admin team, and I, I feel like, we had a discussion last week, too, before the meeting of just like, what is it that we can do to kinda streamline and, you know, cause Beth said, we feel like we're playing whack-a-mole, cause there's, there's always, there's always things that are coming up, um, but just sort of identifying some things that, in, in theory, I don't think we're gonna get, are we gonna get flooded with applications, probably not. I think personally that Small Stones Festival, festival is a good time to advertise it and say that we're gonna start taking applications, but that we won't be installing anything.
But you still need an online forum to form a lot.
I mean, yeah, I can do that, it's not, it's not a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm okay if you feel that, um, you wanna delay, um, you know, applications, but the thing is, if you give people, say, we're gonna start putting up art in January, well, then they're gonna expect it to come up in January.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
You know, so, so my point was, you, you put the policy into effect to start accepting applications, then you reach out to the exhibitors and say, hey, we'd like to display your art, you know, we, we approve, we like your application, uh, why don't you come in and set up a meeting with the director? You know, um, I hate, I hate giving timelines to people.
So, so, but are you saying that you do not want to delay the, do, do you want to make, are you saying you do or do not want to have this in effect as of eleven one? Or just do it without delay?
I'd like to put it into effect without delay, um, but I'm, I'm willing to, to hear.
Stephanie, your opinion on this, about the, whether to delay it or not?
I agree, I would like to put it into effect without delay, uh, I think that the policy.
I, you just.
Several weeks to kind of process application.
I just lost your audio for about ten seconds.
Oh, I, I agree, I would like to put it into effect without delay. I believe that the policy already has several weeks of a buffer to allow applications to be reviewed. I don't, um, I don't see the benefit in delaying us being able to take them once the online application forum is, is set up.
Okay, and are you on board with that?
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
Alright, then.
January first could be a goal, and then at that point, too, we can also reach out at this point and, and to maintenance and say, we're looking at, well, the first is clearly a holiday, but we're looking at the beginning of January, when can that be scheduled?
And, and even if we im- implement things later on, I don't li- I prefer not to have an approved policy be sort of like conditional and be in limbo to some future date. So I guess, uh, so everyone is on board with that by consensus, any further discussion on the, the content? Alright, uh, motion's been made by, uh, Aaron, seconded by Dana to approve the art exhibit and display policy, uh, by roll call, Aaron.
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Roger, aye, declare the motion carried for nothing. Alright. Two C, approval of food, beverage, and kitchen use policy, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the food, beverage, and kitchen use policy.
Alright, motion be by Dana, do I have a second?
A second.
Alright, motion made by Dana, seconded by Aaron. Regarding the food, beverage, and kitchen use policy, do I have any discussion on the motion besides Roman numerals?
I have some commentary from Doug, um, happy to read it.
Yeah, please.
Uh, food policy, um, he said, unless I missed it, any mention of user responsible for cleanup costs that they spill in stain areas, for example, carpet cleaning, it mentions damaged materials and or equipment, in most cases, the normal custodial cleaning, uh, should resolve the carpet issues, but I'm thinking of more extreme cases.
One C seems to address that. About liability for damages?
Yeah, that's, he did say one C, not it mentions, he said, uh, one C mentions.
Oh, one C.
Again, I, I see, so, so you're right.
Alright, there you go.
Yeah, just, you know.
Yeah.
She read the Roman numerals.
Alright, C, yeah, good, good.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
I'm not alone on this anti-Roman numeral thing. Okay.
So I, I don't know what he means by more extreme cases, um, but, uh, what is.
More than spilled wine or cosmetics, like, like, like spring break, hotel room, fire extinguisher, the, fire extinguisher through the window damage? Not that I'm inviting that, but it sounds like he's talking about more extreme things other than like spilled wine or maybe a, a scratch or.
Like tears in the carpet?
Right, maybe.
Something that couldn't be cleaned up.
Right, things that would require like a, yeah, like.
If you spill on library, like if you spill your coffee on a book, the library, that's gonna be, like that, the carpet gets cleaned when it gets cleaned.
Some of this depends on users being accountable, though, because we can't always be in every area all the time, and sometimes people do knock over a blue slushy and it stains the carpet and nobody owns up to it.
It, it does not clean well, unless you're using a professional machine, to be honest, we've tried cleaning up several spills, just soften them, that's the, the design of the carpet.
That was my question, how's it been without the policy, I mean, are people bringing a lot of gross, greasy things, um? Is it a?
It's, it's hit or miss, like, we had, maybe two years ago, somebody went and bought like six orders of french fries from Bushel and Peck and was sharing them, but then it evolved into people were throwing them and it was greasy and they were throwing food, so.
So isn't that in the food fight policy?
Cause you know, some libraries, you're not allowed to, you, and I, I think in Shrewsbury, not unless they changed it, that you're not allowed to have food.
Yeah.
Certain areas, yeah, they have signs on the tables in Shrewsbury of certain areas that you can eat and drink.
Yeah, there's not a lot of areas that you can, if my, um, memory is cor- is correct.
As a teen advocate, feel very strongly that kids are coming in hungry after school and they need to eat food, and we generally don't provide it.
And I think this policy makes a distinction, a- it makes an adequate distinction between that which we talk about as prepackaged and that which is like open meal, slop, if you drop it type of stuff.
Smelly.
That would require like more than just a vacuum cleaner to pick up or, or something.
That's good, I just wondered how it was going, cause we, you know, all the different issues we've had, and it's new for people to come into the library.
I guess we could monitor it to see how it's working.
So, to, to that point, one of the things we talked about, and again, it, we were kind of torn whether we wanted to say it in this way or not, is hot, greasy, messy, odorous foods, right? But anything that, um, not prohibits, but, um, blocks a patron's access to library resources, right? So something that can be offensive, um, or, you know, a complete mess and they can't, you know, access a, a display or an area, or just something that's offensive, uh, language, or people are very sensitive to smells and odors as well. So that's kinda what we're saying, so we're not saying you can't eat your greasy, your odorous foods, we have a place for that.
Sure. So we're not a nut-free building, are we?
I'm sorry, that's another issue.
Yeah, that's.
It's another issue.
Nut-free, alright. But, alright, so are we in agreement to swap out the Roman numerals on this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, uh, Stephanie, did you have any comments on the content of? Alright, uh, Stephanie, did you have any comments on the content of the beverage and food and kitchen use policy?
No, I've reviewed, um, the policy on kind of renting the, the common room. And I think between both of them, uh, it covers everything that I had concerns about.
Okay, thank you. Um, on the, oh, yeah, Beth.
On, um, Roman numeral two or section two, food D, there was a suggestion from a staff member to add. Um, maker space to friend's corner to sort of shepherd. People who are eating greasy, that greasy, messy, odorous food into places that were just not carpeted. So teens would be not be directed out of the teen room, I think, was the intent, into the friend's space right by the door and be loud and disruptive. But it would be sort of a, if you're gonna be eating, you need to be in a space where there's not carpeting if the food is really messy.
So what, what are you recommending that, that is not contained in?
Uh, either on two D, uh, limited to the friend's corner and maker space or limited to vinyl floor areas.
So I, I bet, uh, the term maker space, i- it's, that's.
Teen program.
Yeah, and that, and that's the thing is that the maker space is not an officially designated name for any place in the library. We call it that. But what is the official name for that?
So it depends on if you look at the plan, the, um, the building schematic that was designed, or the signage plan, both designed by the same person.
Okay, so that's.
So we call it the maker space.
And, and.
On the plans, it's teen, and the sign is maker space, room one twenty.
Alright.
Yeah. And the, the room is the teen program room, teen tween program room. It's a vinyl space with the printer and.
So everyone knows, so the signage is there?
Maker space.
Okay.
We call it maker space. And the architect just never went back to edit the drawings. There are many things that are not named.
So did the subcommittee speak of the maker, aside from this comment by the staff? Did you speak of the maker space as possibly wanting to be included or?
I had one.
That was something that came up kind of in discussion and I don't think it made it into the policy and we.
No, I, I don't believe we discussed that at policy committee, um, meeting, um, but. Yeah, so just to, to address that, that comment, um, I mean. I don't want to spell out too much. I, I, I do wanna allow the staff to kind of use their, their better, their own judgment. And say, um, you know, the, the maker space might be a better place to, to eat that food, so you don't have to go all the way to the friend's corner. You know what I mean?
So they're, the thing with, uh, it's been requested from staff that we limit basically like slushies. Uh, the, the carpet is destroyed in the teen gaming room. It's destroyed, like it needs to be replaced. I don't, yeah. So that's kind of where that's coming from is like the messy part, the.
Yeah, okay, messy.
Can't take a vacuum cleaner and clean up a slushie. The slushies do not come out, they come out of the carpet, but it's been cleaned a couple times. And it's just the stains are coming up from underneath because there's so much in there. And it's, they're not doing it on purpose. They're setting things down, they're getting kicked over on accident because teens are active.
Is it that much of a, I mean, is it that much of a hardship for them not to have slushies in there?
The staff then have to fleece it.
If they're gonna have a slushie, have it in the.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I would suggest that perhaps we put something that would be more conducive for them to bringing drinks into that room. Cause I don't think there's any cup holders or tables or anything, um.
And we mentioned that, that's a need too.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea for the Capitol campaign. Yeah, yeah.
So we talk about.
We're getting exhausted, but.
So in three B, so in three B, yeah, talks about spill-proof containers and, and such are permitted throughout the library. But a kid's, a kid's just being, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's spill resistant, but if you drop it or throw it. It's gonna go to spill.
A slushie has a hole in the top with the straw and it's not like a Dunkin' Donuts cup and the pop, they don't stay on.
Yeah, I can't, I think, I don't see why you can just say there's another place to have the slushies. I mean, why couldn't they go and have their slushies somewhere and then go to the gaming? I mean, cause how many times are we gonna replace the carpet? Did we replace it once? Because we're probably gonna need to.
Um, they're not like eating and then gaming. It's kind of a, they game sometimes, but it's really more of a conversation pit. Like they're sitting in there talking, having their snacks flirting, running around on their phone. Sometimes they beam something to the TV. Sometimes Sarah puts on a movie.
Stephanie's hand up.
And then they're eating and drinking while they're actively engaged.
Stephanie, you had your hand up.
Funny, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I wanted to comment on the question about. Um, or the feedback from staff to move it into the maker space. So my concern as a trustee is if we. Change the policy or we ask the staff to kind of funnel the teens with their snacks into the maker's space. That if, if I'm looking where we invested a lot of money in equipment, it's in the maker's space. All along.
I was thinking the same thing.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, is someone speaking?
Uh, yeah, plenty, uh, Stephanie, you have the floor.
Okay, um, so, so I think that, like, I mean, unless. And that gets to policing where they are, being in the maker's table. Um, and if we're saying, you know, no slushies, I do know that from. You know, going in and seeing the carpet over the year, there, there is a lot of stains on that. I think that down the road, um, a conversation for this board might be. Um, when it comes time to replace the carpet, not replacing it with carpet. But a floor that is more easily cleanable for the sake of this policy. I don't think that we should be funneling kids into one, or I'm sorry, the younger, um, teens, tweens into one room. To eat, especially the maker's space, um, and as far as the. Addings that slushies are not allowed, um, I really think that that's not. That's not really going to give us the end result that we want. The carpet's already damaged. Um, it's gonna add another thing onto the librarian's plate that they have to police. And coming from somebody that has teens and tweens themselves, if they're not having slushies. But they're going into Cumberland Farms, which is where they are usually coming from, I assume, to go into the library. Most of the other drinks, um, they also are like those bright reds, like the juices or. The lemonades that are bright blue and so there's, it, slushies are not the only culprit of, of. Having really like saturated color dyes, so I think. Long-term, as a board, we need to figure out a better flooring situation, but that doesn't really have place in this policy right now.
Yeah, Stephanie, um, uh, I, I agree with you, uh, but something just, just came to mind. And it was more kind of what, um, Roger, Roger's comment was, is that, and we did spell this out in the policy is that. Um, we really don't wanna have anything without a proper lid in the library, right? And slushies kind of don't have a lid, right? They're open top.
Right.
So I think it would be a nice compromise. We don't have to specifically spell it out, but it does spell it out in the policy that. Everything should have a, a lid, right?
They do have a lid.
They do have a lid.
They do have a lid, but there is a round hole.
No, it just, it's a regular cup. They're using regular cups with a, no, they're not, they're not using the open ones.
Oh, the open top ones that are like this big, like a baseball?
No. It's like a cup, like a, like you would get a, a soda.
The top just.
The lids are not fitting well.
Is this, is this a, is this a chronic and regular occurring thing?
It is, and I will say that it was the request of the teen room staff to bring this up about corralling them into the teen maker's space. So if we're looking at, we don't wanna put another burden on.
But then, then, then that's.
I understand.
No, no, but I, I'm just saying that, that, a- again, now you're saying you have to come in here, one more thing to police and then. Um, as Stephanie said, and I'll, I'll recognize you in a second, about you're corralling them into the place with the most electronics?
Which only has twelve seats.
Yeah.
Two.
So what, did you have your hand up?
No, you, you covered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what were you saying, uh, Dana?
I wonder if we might, um, I just wonder if maybe we can think about this, um. Offline or have somebody investigate, what's the, what would the cost be for vinyl? I mean, because maybe that's something we should consider, maybe we should have it, um, funded by somebody or something like the Capitol campaign. But I have no idea how much that would be, cause it seems like the rug's already ruined, right?
Yeah, and there're tiles that can be removed. So, I, that's something to consider, but it, it doesn't really necessarily.
And the fact that we acknowledge, the fact that we acknowledge it and, and appreciate that we're not, I mean, I can only speak for myself that. I would be, I would not wanna corral those people and, and for those reasons. Uh, that, it doesn't mean we're not listening to staff.
Right.
But we could say, let's see how this plays out, um, and then consider an alternative. Other than that recommendation, in other words, the fact that they are requesting something, they may not get what they want tonight. Doesn't mean we're not listening. I just want that to be conveyed, that if that's the way we go and don't amend this further to. To make those people have to be in this area, that staff knows that we are considering their concerns.
No, it just brought to me as a member of the policy committee to bring to the meeting for decisions.
Okay.
I think it's understood that it wasn't a guarantee.
Okay.
I'd love to see appropriate cup holders or something in that room, because it's the only room where like they don't have a place to put their drinks. They put them on the floor, they get kicked over.
And kids are bumping into each other.
You know, the, the other tables are fantastic in the teen space, because there's a table and there's two bench seats and they can sit. And they can put their drink down and I'm sure it, it still spills there, but at least they have somewhere where it's not, um, you know, where, where their.
So the answer could be miscellaneous cup holders.
Yeah, something, as a.
But they have to sit on something, right? I guess we can discuss that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, um, I had a question, so on private, um, third paragraph, private events during non-operating hours under the facility rental policy. Must comply with local Board of Health regulations, so presumably those health regs are one of two things. You're giving them to the person signing off on whatever event, or those are posted. Are those posted somewhere? It's the third paragraph, private event.
No, so we just redirect people who are, they wanna have a party, we say, what are you gonna be doing? They say, we're gonna order pizza. I say, great, get in touch with Nancy Connors at the Board of Health, tell her what you wanna do. And then it will be up to the Board of Health to decide if they need the, um, person convening the facility rental. To fill out more paperwork, pay a fee, get, um, you know, the, the safety report or whatever, um, from the restaurant. So like, it seems like if it's a local vendor, Board of Health just goes, oh yeah, go ahead, you're good, but like, if it's an outside of town caterer. They want all of the certifications for the chefs and all of the help, help.
So it's more comprehensive than just having a set of regulations, that they would need certain guidance and there's, there's a process by which. The Board of Health, how, um, my comment was that eventually. And I guess unequivocally, the person signing off on that event will have in hand the expectations or expectations in writing.
Usually Nancy CCs me.
Alright.
Back, yeah, or, or lets me know. Um, and we ran into this because I was being very strict, because when I rented the facility, I had to jump through a lot of hoops to be certified. And to make sure all three of my vendors had their health reports, because they were all from out of town and she didn't know them. Um, and we've also been sort of adamant about like, you're not bringing in food that you prepared in your kitchen. You really need to buy the cookies from Stop and Shop or have them cater from a.
So, so come the day of or the day, the day before a day of that there, by having this and, and Nancy. Spelling things out, I just wanna make sure there's no surprises, last minute surprises, all of a sudden someone shows up and.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, you can't do this or you can't do that, um, but you're saying that the process already exists.
Yeah, and generally, we're not getting facility rental requests for like Friday on a Wednesday.
Okay.
They're often well-planned out, because it's somebody's party or shower, or, uh, you know, a symposium or a training that was scheduled two months ago. And they wanna bring in catered lunch.
Okay.
So the, the timeline usually works and she can turn things around, I will say, very quickly, usually within a week to get the paperwork where we're stamped.
And then.
There is paperwork.
Then the second paragraph, the paragraph before at the first line, all meetings convened during operating hours are considered public events. Um, and food at non-library programs and events are under the jurisdiction of the convener.
Yes.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that book clubs or private gatherings are open to the public. I wasn't sure. So if someone is having a birthday party. Alright, and it, unlike the one, the other, you know, a couple of weeks back. So if there's a birth, if, if I rent the room for my kids' birthday party, anyone from the public can show up.
No, because we would not allow you to request the meeting room during library operating hours for a private event. So then it becomes a facility rental on a Friday night, Saturday night or Sunday.
Alright.
And at that point, um, then you can have it be a, basically a closed, private meeting, cause you're paying for that privilege. And then we're gonna direct you to Board of Health to.
What about a small book club in one of the meeting rooms? Is that a public event?
No, anybody can walk into any meeting at any time per our meeting use policy. And that policy.
How is that going to be, how do we adequately?
It's, uh, you have to read through and agree to that policy before you book your meeting room.
Okay.
Yeah, so if Boy Scouts are meeting and someone wants to come in and observe, people can go in and observe.
Sorry, point of order, can we go back to this policy?
Yeah.
Yes. If the library is putting on a program, then we are already like have our bases covered for do we know CPR? And are we allergen aware and, and are we using a licensed vendor and all of that? So we're saying like the library can't take responsibility for your program, really, you have to do that.
So all meetings convened during operating hours are considered public events, only to the extent that if, if, if I rent a room. And it only holds six people, and I have invited six people. And twelve strangers show up and wanna enter the room, I shouldn't have to stop my event because those people can't fit in. And I'll, akin to like the open meeting, let's say a hundred people tried to gather here and we didn't have a Zoom feature.
Yeah.
We'd have to find a way to continue the meeting, find alternate means. I'm using that as a parallel to this first sentence. That they wouldn't have to stop their event, they, they, I.
This sounds like a, a meeting room policy discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, and the rooms have, have, have limits as well, like capacity limits, and it's all stated in the pot.
Alright, so, alright, 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 and then, um. And then on one E, for programs or events that generate large quantities of trash, do we just leave that undefined? Like what is large quantities? One, one town trash bag, two town, like, do we just leave that? It seems ambiguous, and so how would it be enforced?
That was, that was written that way intentionally, um, because, um. You cannot, uh, you, you can't expect the library to deal with. Your giant pile of trash in the corner after, after your meeting, right? So, um, you may be asked, we use that, um, um, you know, specifically. To take your trash with you at the conclusion of the event, um, you know, a- again, it's ambiguous, but something that generates a large amount of trash is. Stuff that doesn't fit in the bins, right? Doesn't fit in the, in the trash receptacles.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So you did, did you, had, had you discussed the more sort of heavy-handed approach of saying, if you have an event and you have to. Carry out your own trash regardless of how small it may be, or did you, did you discuss that or would that be too heavy-handed? And we'd accommodate some amount of trash on our own, but not excessive amounts, but then what? Large quantities is not further defined, so at what point do we, how do we determine or enforce what is too much? If we haven't objectively identified, so what small town trash bag, like what, what is large quantities?
Generally either for.
From a policy standpoint, you can't, um, it's ambiguous and if you're renting out a space for fifty people. They could say for fifty is an acceptable amount. It, it's sort of, we're putting it in there for people to police themselves, um, from a policy standpoint.
Right, so, so, uh, so you're, is it safe to say that just basically, y- you would be saying that. On a case-by-case basis, we just have a, a discussion with the person renting to, to ascertain how much trash they expect?
That's what we do.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, community meeting rooms, whether it's a Blackstone Valley, holding their annual meeting. Or somebody renting it for a graduation party on the weekend. They don't just, um, apply for the room and it happens in a vacuum and there's no conversation. There's often a walkthrough and an orientation. And at that point, I'll say, we have three trash barrels here that hold three bags of trash. What are you gonna be serving? How much space do you think you need? And in at least two cases, the convener or renter has said, oh, we'll just bag it and take it with us. Because also I'm, I think the shed, uh, may be locked, so you can't get in to throw it away in the dumpster. Um, I know for a fundraiser, we, I think overnight put trash bags outside because we knew we would have custodial.
Alright, so we'll just take it on a case-by-case basis.
I think it's working that way.
Okay, okay, um, and then, um. Three C, glass bottles are not recommended, I guess, you know, legal review this, we, we're not saying they're prohibited. But they're simply not recommended and, um. And then the kitchen use, uh, four A, the kitchen has not been formally established as a community kitchen. What is a community kitchen, like kitchen, where is that defined? Like how does anyone know what a community kitchen is versus a non-community kitchen?
I don't know if it's the state or, or a higher authority who defines it, but I, my understanding is a community kitchen is actually like. Anybody can come in and. Anybody can come in and put things in the fridge and take things out of the fridge, sort of food pantry-ish, where you can come in and use the toaster or use it to cook. Maybe you have to sign up, maybe you have to be trained. And this was designed as a catering kitchen, but again, like on all the plans, I think it might say kitchen, but it may be labeled community kitchen because we were thinking.
Oh, okay.
You know, thinking of it in different ways and then somewhere along the line, somebody said if it's. If it's defined as a community kitchen, there's a whole bunch more rules and regulations and policy procedure that you have to follow.
Okay.
So it really isn't intended like for a homeschool group to rent the meeting room and then teach kids how to cook unsupervised in that kitchen.
So once we deter, once we, once we understand that the nature and scope of the activity.
Yeah.
We can then further look into, and so, so we don't necessarily need to define community kitchen or re, or incorporated by reference. But, but, because it's in capital letters, community kitchen, that's why.
Yeah.
Caught, uh, caught my eye as, as that it's a sort of legal term or a formal. Term defined elsewhere.
They might be able to find it and link to the, uh, the description of community kitchen for state of Massachusetts if that.
And maybe, it may be worthwhile to have the definition on hand somewhere in the library if it does come up.
Yeah.
If someone wonders, are you, what are, what's the distinction between why are you letting me do this and not this?
Right.
Okay.
So, um, just to your point about capitals, um, I just noticed that only probably shouldn't be capitalized, uh, like that, it, it just.
Where are you looking?
It's the next. So, so, uh, for, for A, uh, only to groups convening. So I think that should just be lowercase if we're all agreed, unless we feel that should be caps.
Now, we need to put some emojis in there too, really scold them.
Yeah.
No, I agree, I agree.
If, if we really want to, we can underline it maybe, but I don't think caps is, um, peaceful there.
Okay, all right, um.
I think it's, I think.
And then the, the last thing I wanted to mention is under five D, potluck is allowed under. Chapter two hundred thirty of the Acts of twenty fourteen, um, an act relative to potluck events. Now. Um, for more quick reference, chapter two thirty of the Acts of twenty fourteen is also known as Mass General Law, chapter ninety-four, section three twenty-eight A.
Okay.
So, um, I think that's, and it's, it's actually, it's mirrored, in other words, it carries over and. So sometimes, um, and, and Stephanie, please, uh, pipe in because you're, uh, more of a policy expert than I am. About, um, when chapters are enacted, they may not necessarily have chapter and verse already outlined. Under the general laws.
So when they are submitted to the legislature as bills, um, they usually are broken down. That might change once it is signed into law by the governor at that time. And then they're inputted. So if you look up Mass General, Mass General Law right now, it will have. The chapter, the section, the verse, the subsection, um, if anybody needs help getting that language, I can assist with that.
Okay, so let me ask everyone's opinion. In other words, it, it's, I will concede that it's duplicative to have both references. But I know that just from a user, if I'm looking for some type of, um, law or some type of. You know, yeah, edict or law that. Is referenced as a chapter or whatever of the Acts of pick a year, that is, it is carried over. To the general laws as a chapter and a section. So. I'm okay if everyone else is okay with leaving that out, but I'm just simply saying that the other reference to it is, uh, MGL, chapter ninety-four, section three twenty-eight A. In parentheses, but I'm okay if, if everyone's in agreement to leave that out. That reference, i- it's duplicative, all right?
Yeah.
But sometimes people from a, a sort of user-friendly way, if it's further spelled out where they may find it. Um, that could be helpful, but it's not, to leave that general law section out is not fatal, is what I'm saying.
I think in other policies, we tend to.
So, I'm sorry, can I jump in? Um, if we want to be accurate, you wanna also include like part one, title fifteen, chapter. Ninety-four, section three twenty-eight A, that's how someone would be able to find it unless they are going to just sort of. Google the Massachusetts Legislature or Mass General Law and potluck.
Right.
Um, but if they wanna look it up specifically, part one, title fifteen, chapter ninety-four.
Right.
Section three twenty-eight A.
And you, you're right, you're absolutely right because I, I, I've Googled it and you're absolutely right about the preface and, and by the way, I'll, uh. All kidding aside, it is in Roman numerals because it needs to be that, and so, um, I, I'm okay with leaving it out. I just, um. Because then it gets really even more lengthy by saying, yeah, all those prefaces. Um, and I guess if someone had, they could always Google it.
I would say other policies have MGL referenced.
Uh-huh.
And this was, I, maybe the first thing that came up, so that's what I put in. Also, if these are going online or live documents, they could be hyperlinked and we could go directly to.
Yeah, that would be great.
The policy, they are pretty persistent as they're on state website.
Right, and the other thing too is that, um, the online version though, there's the qualifier that says this is not an official document. It is a, um, sort of a, um. I'm at a loss for the word, but, um, they're basically saying, trying to exonerate themselves that the online version may not, it's not an official legal document. That there could be mistakes, I guess. Legal documents are in some sort of bound copy, but, um. Is everyone okay then with leaving the general law section out? Stephanie, you had a comment?
Sorry, so I just had one question if we're gonna leave it in, um, there is actually the Department of Public Health. That has a section on potlucks as well. Um, so something that we might wanna do instead of having it in line is say. At, at the bottom, almost like a footnote, you kind of can see that sometimes in policies, like this policy, um. Is guided by. And then reference the law and reference like the state sanitary code, chapter ten, you know, of, of the public health. So that people understand that we didn't just kind of make this up, our policy committee did take into consideration the laws that we have in the state. And while making the policy, but it's not going to be word for word with the laws.
So, so let me ask you this, um, uh, now that you mentioned that there is an additional reference, would it be easier than, and, um. Even if we don't necessarily need to spell things out, that potluck is allowed under. Under Massachusetts general laws or, or is allowed on.
Well, so, sorry.
Yeah, please.
Go ahead.
No, 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 I'm, I'm.
Um, so the Department of Health, yeah, the Department of Health, um, one oh five CMR five ninety is about potluck and it actually. References back to the MGL, chapter ninety-four, subsection, um, three twenty-eight A, so it's, it just. They are kind of going off each other, which is why I said if we wanna, if we wanna highlight one, we can actually also include. The, um. Department of Public Health from Massachusetts as well. It, it won't put any more work on our policy committee. And seeing the MGL, we just get the benefit of kind of putting both on there.
So, uh, so, uh, under the MGL, what is the, the, and, and I think it's Roman numerals and, and that would be cool because if it's a legal document, I know that. Those Rome, those have to remain Roman numerals because they're in the general laws. So on the MGL, the ninety-four, three twenty-eight A, what is the preface to, preface to that again?
Uh, it's, uh, part one, title XV fifteen, chapter nine, D four, uh. Subsection thirty-two, uh, three two eight A. And if any, like, if we want to accept this policy, um, if anyone needs help writing that, we could accept this policy. And I could, um, like. With the amended way, the proper way of writing the law and I could just email that to the policy committee so that no one has to worry about writing it the right way.
So you're saying then part one, thank you for offering that, um, assistance. So part one, meaning Roman numeral one, comma, title fifteen or no?
Yeah, comma. Title fifteen in Roman numerals, so XV, comma. In chapter ninety-four, comma. Uh, if you're gonna write it out, you write section three twenty-eight. A, um, or there's a subsection symbol that you could use.
So where does M, Mass General Law fully spelled out or MGL, is that before part one? Is it MGL?
Yeah, it's M dot G dot L.
So that would come before part one.
Then you reference it.
Okay. So, M dot G dot L in caps, part one in Roman numerals, comma, title fifteen XV in Roman numerals. Comma, chapter ninety-four, comma, section three twenty-eight A. Um, do we also say and? Um, one oh five CMR five ninety, or do we spell out Code of Mass Regulations or do we reference DPH? Or can we just leave? Um, the DPH regs. Uh, are you certain that the one oh five CMR five ninety duplicates chapter ninety-four, section three twenty-eight A?
I'm, I'm looking at it right now and it, it, it's, it spells it all out in different sections, but it references back to. The MGL, um, but sometimes, especially with kitchens, people will ask if we have taken into consideration the laws of public health.
Okay.
Which is why I just wanted to, I guess, ask if it was something we wanted to add.
Okay. Um. Adding the MGL or adding the DPH? Stephanie, are you, are you, are you saying?
So, yes, sorry, it just glitched out. Um, I was just asking if we're going to leave the MGL in the reference to the law. If we wanted to additionally add where it's referenced in the Department of Public Health's State Sanitary Code. We don't have to. I was just asking if it was something we also wanted to.
Um, I, 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 I mean, it, uh, it, it's six of one, half a dozen of another for me. I just would want to make sure that. If we leave it out, that we're not leaving out some pertinent section, um, if, if.
May I make a?
Yeah, please.
Just, just ta, have a break here for a moment because you guys are totally, uh, uh, losing, some of us here, including myself. Um, so I think you said this earlier, um, and I was kind of thinking the same thing.
Sure.
Is. Can we make a, a very general statement? Uh, because I don't know if you guys are referencing Mass General Law or, you know, um, federal law or, or.
It's all state.
The, the, the World Health Organization, right? State, right?
Okay.
So can't we say potluck is allowed, um, under, uh, Mass General Law, uh, relative to potluck events, right? And then we don't have to be so specific about calling out all the different, um.
Right.
You know, places they, they would look. It, it's like, is the intention to add it there to be helpful where they can look up potluck? Or, I, I mean, I don't think. Any of that is gonna be very helpful. If I wanna have a potluck, I'm gonna go, okay, look at this policy and try to figure out exactly where it's called out, right? Um, or are we just trying to cover ourselves? I mean.
No, I think it was more, I, I consider more of a public service for informational purposes that they may find details, that's all.
We have to be careful too, because this is already passed legal, right? And if we change it too much, then it'll have to go back to legal.
Okay.
Okay.
So I don't know if we would just wanna say something generally. I think it's important to, to note potluck, right, is allowed.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So.
Um, all right, then if this is past legal, um, i- is everyone okay with maybe revisiting the further details about MGL and, and, uh, DPH? Uh, I don't, I don't wanna start adding things and then be awry of legal, possibly saying that while either it's unnecessary, it's incorrect.
Yeah, so other policies like Code of Conduct where it says no smoking in the library, it says MGL and it lists the law. So I would be more comfortable with being consistent, saying MGL, here's the law. And the thing is, when somebody says they wanna have a potluck. Whoever is doing that, you know, in orientation is gonna say, oh, are you aware? Here's the resource. You have to make sure you call it a potluck in the description. Here's the disclaimer you have to use. This is really all about liability.
Okay.
It says, we're not taking any responsibility if somebody gets food poisoning.
So, so, um, getting back to my peers, including, um, Stephanie and, and Zoom, are, is. Are we okay with just then leaving the Mass General Law reference in and for now, leaving the DPH sanitary code out?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. I just wouldn't drop the MGL, like Beth said.
Okay, and if we do need to reference some state sanitary, we could always add it later. But, uh, so it's agreed upon that we would include the reference to the Mass General Laws. Uh, any further discussion on the motion?
I have one point.
Yeah, please.
I, and I'm so sorry we missed this, but we did say this is not a community kitchen and then we called it a community kitchen twice. So I would like to, I'm so sorry.
Where, where are you?
So under, um, section five, food preparation and service, uh, second line, only in the community kitchen, that should just say kitchen.
Okay, so strike the word community in five A?
Yep, and then, um, again, in five. B, third line, community kitchen, I would strike it from there as well. I think the understanding is. We have a kitchen on the first floor and a staff break room that has a sort of a kitchen upstairs.
So then, then the, the word kitchen should not be capitalized.
It's the name of the room. It's on the sign of the room, yeah.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Did I miss it anywhere else?
Uh, I can't.
I don't.
I can't search this particular document, but.
Yeah, I think we say it's not a community kitchen and then, sorry, we called it that twice.
Well, I think we can agree if, um. If it spells out community kitchen in other places in the policy, that we'll strike it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes sense. I think we have to.
All right, all right, um, all right, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor by roll call, Aaron.
Aaron, aye.
Dana.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Roger, aye, declare the motion carried four nothing. Um, so, uh, director's report, I've read it. I don't have any questions, but I'm, I'm just going to be mindful of what, what time are we looking at?
Ten of nine.
This, yeah, we're at ten of, we're at ten of nine in this abbreviated, abbreviated meeting.
Yeah, I gotta leave.
Um, yeah, so I think the idea is, um, she provides it to us, um, because it's a great resource for the board to understand what, what went on at the library. And if we have any questions, we can ask Beth, but I don't think she needs to go through it.
No.
Unless, um, you have infographics, which are great if you wanna talk through those.
I don't have the time anymore to do.
Yeah, but no, this is fantastic.
So there, let me ask you this.
That makes sense.
There, um. All right, never mind. I was looking at the, so we, do we have any, we don't have any public. O- aside from Stephanie having signed in, there's no public that, public input. This is the next section on the agenda.
So I see two comments in the chat.
I don't see that anyone has signed in except me anymore.
There was two comments in the chat that I, that were from earlier on.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah. Stephanie asking to be.
All right, so library-related announcements, five policies have committed to be determined. Um, library trustees next, September twenty-seventh. Um, friends is Tuesday, September tenth. And, um. And I, I, we didn't have any old or new business. I'll, I guess I'll, uh, take him, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion made by Aaron, seconded by.
I second, I second, I do a second motion.
All right, by roll call, Aaron.
Aaron, aye.
Dana.
Aye.
Stephanie. Stephanie, aye.
Aye.
All right, Roger, aye, declare the motion to adjourn, approved four nothing. This meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-one PM.